Yes.
My lord, two bits of housekeeping dealt with over lunch. Can I pass up? A second. Thank you very much. It's the Public Health Act nineteen thirty six.
Oh, thank you, yeah.
Section two, six, nine, which regulates tents and movable dwellings. Just for one copy of that and one copy of the document. Just for the note, that is disapplied in respect of caravans by section thirty of the nineteen sixty act.
Right.
The other document I've handed up is the lawful development certificate, which was issued by the planning inspector on the appeal.
Thank you.
That's probably most appropriate to be put in a supplementary bundle at after page fifty seven, where we have the appeal decision.
So that was page?
Page fifty seven of the supplementary bundle, my lord, so just after that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. My lords, I was dealing with the upper tribunals.
Yes, yes.
I dealt with paragraph forty eight, I was turning to, I turned to paragraph forty nine, which is at page fifty four of the core bundle. And the suggestion, recognise that there could be an article four direction, my lord, that goes to our rush, our point that the view of the decision of first and third immunity ration is not legally correct. The, there's no advantage substantial or otherwise if a HETOP in what has happened. And non is conferred by the site licenses, other than enabling the retention of particular bases and the ability to get on with this site being occupied. There are four caravans being occupied, this site essentially, as the court will appreciate being stuck for the last eight years. Paragraph fifty, that was effectively, so just briefly with the point in paragraph fifty about section two, eight, five.
Sorry, paragraph fifty, yes. Yes.
Which is the provision, the validity of an enforcement notice may not be challenged on any grounds of appeal. That is not engaged by position here, because it is possible for planning permission to be granted for development, which is the subject matter of enforcement notice, whether retrospectively or prospectively. And I've covered earlier today, section hundred and eighty and hundred and eighty one of the Town and Country Planning Act. So there's nothing in the section two, eight, five point. There isn't, to paragraph fifty one, a reversal of the order in which the matter should be considered. It wasn't considered, there were any planning issues which remained to be dealt with there. What the first tier tribunal was dealing with, what was acceptable in planning terms in doing that. And again, at the end of one, five, one, we have the upper tribunal taking the pure planning considerations of the world heritage site and the conservation area of the landscape designation. Fifty two, the tribunal accepted that the planning dispute has been resolved. That was a dispute about what size caravans could be cited. So the first tier tribunal was doing what it needed to do, which is then decide what site license should be issued more particularly, whether the conditions of limiting to three by the local authority were unduly burdensome, which is what it did, and it came up with a rational decision. Fifty three, there isn't an inconsistency. It's the way the regime works and the regime has mechanisms dealing with it, as the council and the upper tribunal acknowledge in terms of the article four direction that's available. So, my lord, it was a decision by the first tier tribunal, which was a careful judgment, rather as sort of a compromise in terms between the parties' positions, but one which properly drew a distinction between matters that could be relevant to site licensing, particularly impact on the trees, and the pure planning consideration of the merits. And the way in which the upper tribunal deal with it is to find a finding of public law irrationality on the basis of essentially a point of principle, that the view of the planning merits contained in the enforcement notice cannot be potentially undermined by a site license. And that is a approach which has no basis in the legislative regimes in the nineteen sixty act or in the nineteen ninety act. This isn't a case where the upper tribunal said, well, actually, all these matters that led to the enforcement notice appeal being dismissed were section five site considerations, doesn't go, seek to go down that route. It imposes a restriction on the ability of the tribunal, the first tier tribunal, to consider what the conditions could be, and even ability on the authority to consider what conditions to impose on the basis of a view on planning merits, which is always capable of being either overtaken or detected within the regime. So, my lords, for all those reasons, the view of the first tier tribu, the view of the upper tribunal, that the first tier tribunal decision was public law irrational, were wrong, and this appeal ought to be allowed. I just tend didn't need to deal briefly with the issue which has, we've touched on already, which has arisen in the course of preparation for this and the argument, which is about the site layout plan in the nineteen sixty six permission and condition two. The first point, of course, is that that is a point which is not taken at any stage, either by the local authority when imposing the conditions, or the first tier tribunal, or the upper tribunal. And the condition, the plots identified by the council and by the upper tribunal, those allowed in are ones which don't conform to the nineteen sixty eight site license layout.
Can you say it again?
The plots which are allowed by the council decision and the upper tribunal, so.
Yeah, three and six.
Well, one, twenty three, twenty four, those three, my lord, are the enforcement notice sites. Those are not within the areas identified by the layout plan on the nineteen sixty eight site license.
Not sure how easy it is for us to see that. As you said, this has not been tackled by.
It's not, it's not been tackled by, my lord, we have the overlays of the sort of site layout, which I took the court to briefly, the site layout plan and site.
Well, can you put the point the other way around?
Yeah.
The section three requires there to be a planning permission for the use of the site. There's only one planning permission, or maybe two, fifty two, sixty six, for the use of the site. Planning permission, according to higher authority, includes the conditions, and indeed, section twenty nine, four says that as well here. So the conditions would include condition two and the site layout, correct so far?
Yes, my lord.
Was it ever been said, is it being said by the appellant, that the hard standings for which you contended fell within the areas authorized by that layout? Assuming the sixty eight license is roughly the same layout.
No, no, it hasn't, and my lord, the reason of that is that, first of all, the sixty six layout plan is, is lost.
Well, yeah, that's why I built in the reference to the sixty eight license, because everyone seems to have been operating on the basis. It was very similar, so if you take that as a proxy, if that's reasonable, you're not saying that any of these sites fell within the sixty eight layout.
My lord, some, some of the plots would fall within the groupings and some of them are outside the groupings. It's not, firstly, there's been no.
Findings.
There's been no findings, there'd be no analysis of that. You can overlay what two to the sixty eight with, with the plots, but there's been no analysis of that. Of course, the six, the site, the sixty, the site license conditions.
You, you were relying on the PD rights.
Yeah.
But they were based on the sixty eight license.
They were, they were based on the sixty eight license.
So same layout.
And the, the reason the enforcement notice appeal failed was the view that
Conditions.
It had to comply with the whole of the site license, and that was an issue, but it wasn't.
So that was, just remind me again, that's, the two conditions in play were.
In terms of the nineteen sixty eight site license, the layout is condition four.
Four as well as.
Condition four, the sixty eight site license.
Four related to the, four related to the what, site, site layout?
Site layout, my lord, yeah. So in terms of the sixty.
It would have been open to an appellant in your client's position when they went to the FTT to say, well, we've got PD rights, we're ignoring the site layout, which was your, your real case. You could have had a fallback case, saying, we've got rights based upon the site layout, at least in part, but you didn't run that.
No, 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 my lord, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't say, well, if, if you go, if you go back to the sixty eight layout plan, some of these plots would fall within, no, we didn't take that.
I'm just trying to get my head there, thank you.
So in terms of the sixty six layout plan, that's, that was very limited, well, it wasn't relied on in, by any site in the site license appeal, where people, essentially, the, the problem, we recognised a long time ago, is that nobody actually had the plan. The decision was lost.
Is there any reason to doubt the age of location sixty six permission was any different to the age of location sixty eight license?
The layout we have on the sixty eight license doesn't have the orientation of the particular basis which is required by the sixty six.
It was from the, the north east to the south west or something.
Yes, my lord, yeah, so it.
Condition two.
It, it, it doesn't comply with, with that orientation. Whether the particular areas are the same is unknown. Mighty further, there's not a great deal of difference, but that becomes a, becomes an inference. But so there's never been any attempt to rely on the sixty six let, can, site license, site layout. And the reason for that is too far, firstly, it would be an empty hazard. And if there is it, you need to then reach a, well, reach a conclusion of what it showed. The question would then arise as to whether or not that had been breached for ten years, such as it, the breach was lawful in planning terms, the condition no longer had effect, whether in whole or in part. And those are matters which nobody has addressed or determined. So in respect of this appeal, my lords, we're dealing with a, built in the upper tribunal, a series of decisions and considerations, don't take this point at all, and which this court isn't able to make findings on, other than perhaps there is some degree of uncertainty either way. That's not a basis for upholding the six and the upper tribunal's decision. Takes us back to the first tier tribunal, if there was, it makes two stresses of how this could, could proceed, if it was in due course sought to be argued that the sixty six site layout was still in force in planning terms, and that's a matter, the planning process to resolve, the site license wouldn't in fact undermine that point if it was, if it was raised, it would be another complication, I mean, far too many complications on this matter.
But sorry to interrupt.
Certainly, my lord.
Boiling this down, you were relying in the enforcement notice appeal on PD rights derived from the nineteen sixty eight license.
Yes, my lord.
On the basis that you only needed to show that, that you were required to comply with one condition, and that condition was.
Required to comply with additions, well, it said several conditions, but require, say, take hard standing if we required.
Now, which is, which was the condition you were relying upon, that you said you'd comply with and gave you the PD rights, ignoring the other conditions?
It was principally hard standing, so if we go to condition, sub country bundle fifteen, condition eight on hard standing.
Yes, and that wasn't the case, that was the one you were relying on.
Yeah.
Well, you could rely upon that to have any number of hard standings. It's not occasion specific, and it doesn't identify the number of them. Anyway, if you wanted to say, well, we've also got a potential ten year immunity period to we can rely upon, so that we don't have to comply with condition four, yes?
No, no, my lord, the layout.
You keep saying that you may have gained immunity through the ten year rule.
Yeah.
Applied to a breach of condition.
In, in respect of the planning permission, the sixty six planning permission, my lord, the, there's no immunity period that arises for breach of a site license.
True enough.
Yeah. So that, that, that issue doesn't arise in respect of the, whether there's been a, a long term breach, but it's.
Doesn't relies in relation to the creation of a PD right, based on the sixty eight.
Based on the site license, my lord, yeah. It's only, it's only on the, the effect of the planning permission, that the immunity arises.
Okay.
So, my lord, that's suggests a, a point which is out with the appeal and the upper tribunal decision. If that raises problems in the future which need to be resolved, then that, that would have to be done outside these proceedings. But it's not a reason to either uphold the upper tribunal, to uphold the upper tribunal decision. If the sixty six layout is an issue, raises issues, it raises issues about the fixing of a layout plan in this, this site license, rather than necessarily one of numbers, but my lord, it's not a, a matter that arises on this appeal. Although we hope to get some resolution towards bringing, bringing this complicated site back into, back into productive use. It is, as the court will appreciate, been a long, a lot, a long process. My lords, unless I can help in further, those are all my submissions at this stage.
Christopher. There's just one question, if you can go back to the upper tribunal decision, page fifty five of the core bundle, paragraph fifty four, and the, this use of the word irrational. It's quite law that irrational covers not just Wrensbury perversity, but also failure to take into account material consideration, that goes back to Wrensbury itself.
Yes, my lord, yeah.
And when you read fifty four again, at least part of it is, is to be read as if it's saying when it was wrong for them to disregard the planning position, and in that sense, their decision was irrational.
My, my lord, that's not, not the way it's put, because of course.
You read the first sentence, in washing its hands of any considerate slightly colourful of planning matters, imposing which, et cetera, et cetera. It's saying they were ignoring the planning background.
And then, my lord, in the second sentence, the tribunal goes on, it was not unduly burdensome for the council to limit the number of caravans which could be positioned.
Yes, invoking a consistency principle, which we see in prison.
In, in vote, leading, leading to a conclusion about whether it was unduly burdensome to the matter which the tribunal had determined, and saying, well, it's not unduly burdensome now. In, in a public, of course, in a public law review, if a decision maker does something which is irrational, it may well be the only conclusion which could have been reached, is, is the opposite conclusion, in this case, not unduly burdensome. Where in a public law review, a decision maker has left something out of account, the wider Wrensbury considerations, my lord, then the analysis would be, something's, having something left out, it was unlawful to have reached the conclusion that it was unduly burdensome in those circumstances, they go and made it unlawfully. It doesn't follow that the only conclusion which could have been reached was the opposite.
It would have been open to the upper tribunal to reach its own conclusion, taking the factor into account, didn't have to send it back.
But it's, but it's put, but it's, it's put as a direct counterpoise to, to, to the irrationality finding. I mean, the tribunal's basing it on that, they, the, the first tier tribunal couldn't have reached the view it did, given the circumstances, and that's, that's relatively hard, opposed to pure planning considerations, which have been undertaken. My lord, unless I feel.
No, thank you very much, yes, Mrs. Kimden.
My lord, the phrase which I'm going to come back to, and which has been something of a keystone or a point to which we have frequently returned, has been planning position. And in due course, I'm going to look at the ways in which planning position is in fact key to many of the factors which resolve this, this appeal. Before turning to the planning position, I want to pick up on a couple of points, just to fill in the background. I have to say, my lovely friend has been scrupulously fair in the way in which he's opened the facts, he's left very little for me to have to pick up on, and I'm grateful to him for that. What we haven't touched upon is what happened prior to the time at which a license was produced, we're here concerned with the FTT proceedings, which are about the conditions, prior to that, there was a set of proceedings which was about getting a license. I just want to touch upon that material.
You mean the twenty twenty two license?
Yes, exactly. And to, to show how the points fit together, if we could turn to the chronology, which is in the core bundle at page forty one, we can see how the parts fit together. And we can see that in August of twenty eighteen, there was a site application submitted. And then by the end of December twenty eighteen, it was refused. Then during the course of twenty nineteen, there was proceedings in respect of the planning position, the enforcement notice and the application for a certificate. In twenty nineteen, the FTT allowed HETOP's appeal and said, you should have a license. And that was what was the subject of an appeal to the upper tribunal on the first occasion. And we haven't looked at that yet, and it is worthwhile to see that, because it is helpful in understanding the terms of the site license, which is behind this appeal. And that upper tribunal decision is in the authorities bundle, behind tab four. It was a decision of the upper tribunal, third judge Elizabeth, was promulgated on the third of March twenty twenty. And it, it is helpful to pick this up in the context of what's been said about rationality, because judge court decided that in, on the facts of this particular point, the FTT has been irrational. The, the facts here are that the council was saying, and I wasn't instructed at this stage, and so I'm, I'm doing this purely from the materials, and the council was saying, we, we can't issue a site license yet because there's an issue about static caravans versus ferry caravans. And we need to know what the permission means in that regard. And the council's position was, that is going to be resolved by, via a planning inquiry. And it was irrational for the FTT to require a license to be issued until that issue was resolved. So that was the background. And page sixty four, page eleven of the decision, paragraph forty eight, is particularly relevant. So what the, the upper tribunal was saying here is that, well, compelling a license to be granted is irrational, because you're doing one of two things. What one is, you're forcing, you're either forcing the council to produce a license in respect of something which is illegal, or you're forcing the council to produce something which the appellant doesn't want. And at fifty four, this was described as an impossible position, out of the fourth second line. It was irrational to make a decision that placed a public authority in such an impossible position. And the reason I draw attention to that is that ultimately, when the matter went back and after a significant degree of resistance by the council to granting a license, ultimately was that the FTT compelled a license to be drafted. And one was drafted, and that became the license. And the reason that the council was resistant still to granting a license, because while the planning appeal had resolved an issue about the type of caravan, mobile or static, what it still remained to, to be identified was the extent to which the operational development notice constrained the grant of any future license. As court has seen, there was a second appeal from that planning inquiry under section two, eight, nine of the Town and Country Planning Act, and we've seen the lone deputy judge's judgment in that regard. And it was to await the settling of the planning circumstances, so that the planning position was understood. That's why the council was resistant to granting a license until that set of planning circumstances, the planning position was fully understood. But as the court, we've seen from the court bundle, that appeal to the upper tribunal was then appealed to the Court of Appeal and a single law justice, now the senior president, declined to give permission to appeal, saying that it was. declined to give permission to appeal, saying that it was indeed irrational to get to a position where you're granting a licence before you know what the planning position is. So that's just filling in some of the background, and it's perhaps instructive that the question of planning position and whether or not it's rational to be granting the licence, that is something that occurred already in these proceedings. In any event, we we come to the point where we have a licence which has, as my learned friend points out, just three units on it. And correctly, my learned friend points out that the locations of those units were not consistent with the terms of the enforcement notice. But the reality of the situation was that the council had to grant a licence for something that had been told to do so by the first tier tribunal. And so though it is correct to say it's inconsistent with the enforcement notice, as we've seen from the record of the evidence before the first tier tribunal, Mr. Arkel said, well, I chose these because they they seem to be particular standings which didn't require to be removed in order for there to be compliance with the enforcement notice. And that's why he chose them. So I hope that fills in some of those gaps. My learned friend, um, as I've indicated, has set out the background by reference to the two principal permissions and the two principal existing licences. If I may say so thoroughly. Taking the planning position starting point first of all, my first submission is this, that it is very much the case that before the planning inspector underground C of the appeal in respect of the operational notice, that it was permitted development rights that were being sought to be relied upon.
Ground C is that, um, the matter enforced against his lawful.
Yes, the planning permission not required.
Yes, planning permission is not required.
And so it is worthwhile to to turn up the decision letter in the supplementary bundle at page twenty five, which summarizes at the outset what the two appeals are about. And at page twenty six, the summary is there in respect of notice two, the operational development notice. And we see at the bottom of that list that the grounds of appeal set out as A, C, F and G. A being planning permission should be granted, C being not required, F being other, less onerous actions that would meet the requirements underlying the notice and G is more time. It's the practice of the inspectorate to always take the legal grounds first, which is why um, they're dealt with. First of all, dealing with ground C, then turning to ground A, if somebody doesn't get they don't show that they don't need permissions, they don't get permission, they're then then left in the direction of the case really rich as F and G. So the focus in terms of the grounds was firstly on C and then upon the merits in A. And if one turns to the way in which the inspector deals with this appeal. Starting at page forty two, page forty two, in the middle has the heading notice to operational developments and turned straight away to ground C, relying upon uh, the overarching description of the planning position that she had already identified. And so far as ground C is concerned, we turn to page to page forty four at paragraph one hundred. What had happened was that the inspector had identified condition four from sixty eight licence and taken that to be pretty much the same as condition two on sixty six permission applied. Such evidence of what that referred to as she could find, taking the plan from the licence. And to my mind, it must follow that the location of any roads and hard standings required would need to also reflect where the caravan hard standings must be grouped to also satisfy this condition. And so one imagines the layout that clearly the hard standings would need to relate sensibly to where the road is. And that being so, one hundred and six, referring again to the plan attached to the notice and the alignment of the road. The inspector explains, rather than continue to wrap around the form of green and wind down, it's the break in the wall that takes a far more direct alignment. It seems unlikely based on the evidence before me that a road of the alignment constructed is required to ensure that each caravan would not be more than a hundred and fifty feet and also satisfy condition four. So what was, to take my lord, your justice Paul Gates point about the relationship between the licence which was extant, which permitted development rights did apply and that which was being sought, we see that that really crystallising in one hundred and eight. But the appellant also suggests that the retaining gabion walls are permitted development under the G P D O. So what we have on here in, on this site in terms of scale is development, which is really very substantial. That the gabions are stone gabions in in wires we see alongside roads and cushions, et cetera, stacked on each other. They're very substantial structures. And what was being sought underground C is to say that this is all permitted development pursuant to what is to be found uh, in the planning and licensing history, and that was rejected. So the next submission is as to the planning position from there as to a second appeal under section two eight nine, which in short, um, confirmed the inspector's findings. There's no error of law in that regard. So that the planning position in in this case is, um, somewhat different from any of those which we will see when we come to the authorities. But the planning position is one which includes planning permissions which have some quite detailed conditions on them in comparison to the cases we will look at. There is in existence a site licence. There is a definitive finding as to what is lawful pursuant to both a Secretary of State's decision and that the section two eight nine judgment, and the section two eight nine judgment is essentially the end of the road. There being effectively, no one would appeal from section two eight nine.
Is that the one of Mr. Mould?
Yes.
Which we've got in the authorities bundle?
Which we have in the authorities bundle. Um, so that there isn't effectively access to the Court of Appeal from such concept of a judgment.
Does he just take the same views as the inspector?
He does. And I can come to that in just, in just a moment. So what what we have in terms of the planning position is something which crystallizes at the point of High Court's order. And what has crystallized is that there are no permitted development rights which authorize the development which the appellant seeks to retain. High Court's decision is probably worth going to just to make good the points which I been submitting on. Tab twelve.
One oh five of the, um, I mean, there is a finding there on noncompliance of condition four. It's hesitant. Slightly hesitant. Location of some of the concrete bases may not on the balance of probability of being locations consistent with condition four.
Yes, it is a, it's a finding, it's a nuanced finding, but it is, it is a finding, yes.
Sorry.
Not at all. Um, uh, so twelve in the authorities bundle for the judgment of now Mr. Justice Mould. Um, where if I could go out to essentially three points. Firstly, at page two five eight. It's two five eight. Dealing with ground one, ground one is, is the alleged error that operational development wasn't P D. And at two five nine, paragraphs seventeen seventy one, the lone executive judge sets out decision letter one oh one, which is essentially that point and finds that no error of law. Firstly, it's found, founded upon the express terms of P D right. And secondly, it is called for the proper approach to the construction search.
So I'm just noticing paragraph sixty seven of the judgment, page two five nine, which records the appellant's argument.
Which is exactly the argument before the inspector.
And that was the one I was putting to Mr. Howard?
Yes.
I mean, there was a reason, in other words, why they needed to say um, that this complies with condition, whichever it was, the hard standing, which number eight, wasn't it?
Yes, yes.
Because of the difficulty of complying with four.
But because dealing with this as a matter of the reality of the litigation, what was being sought was for it to be said that that which had been constructed was lawful. And that's the point that the appellant had to get to. There is a second ground which is relevant here, which is, which is ground three, as it was numbered in the case, at page two six three. So page two six three, we're dealing there with a point about the fallback complaint under ground three was the inspector failed to take into account that the fallback position, fallback position was that a licence being granted. Quite a lot of the infrastructure on the site that would be needed in any event. All sorts of poles and wires, et cetera. And the the judge discusses this at some length from paragraphs ninety one on the circuit. Initially, the judge at ninety one, um, says, well, I'm ninety two saying, well, the inspector doesn't deal with this at all. But what the judge does find ninety three is what the judge had properly understood by virtue of section three three, which is central section or subsection in this case. And a local authority may issue a site licence only if, and that's the planning permission requirement. And what the judge then goes on to do is to discuss how the inspector has treated this very question during the course of her decision letter and finds that she had considered that the fallback position. What's important is, uh, his confirmation as to the to the baseline, the planning baseline point, the baseline position, which is the court will recall, is a phrase which pops up in the U T decision. So at ninety eight, the judge finds that the inspector had explained the fallback position, put shortly, the appellant's argument was based on the premise that the site status as a lawful caravan site enabled the appellant to site operate to recreate the site layout, which had been the product of the operational works. On the inspector's analysis, she found that premise to be, at the very least, questionable. Her own assessment, appropriately authorized, the site was one whereby the number and location of caravan standards and location of services and internal roadways was defined by sixty six conditions, and in particular, the requirements of condition two. That's what she said was the baseline position. And for that reason, the lone deputy judge rejected ground three as to consideration of the baseline position, rather he considered that she had properly addressed it in the way that he describes. And that's helpful then, as I've indicated, in understanding where the debate before the upper tribunal came from about the appropriate planning baseline and then coming back to the phrase planning position. The planning position in this case does incorporate a particular planning baseline and the operational works undertaken on the site are a very long way away from that planning baseline. I'll come back to the upper tribunal's decision in due course, but before I do that, I want to compare and contrast the position which we have in this case with, um, the actual background to the key authorities which we ought to have a look at. They are essentially four in number and they revolve around Esdol in one way or another. Um, save for the Scottish decision. They are cases which derive from what I call them, section seventeen cases. They're effectively deemed permissions which come about in nineteen sixty when the caravan Caravan Lights Act comes into force and people have to make sure that they secure their rights. And the the three cases of Esdol, Crippendham and Babbage are instructed because, instructed because they're slightly different in in nature. But they're relatively simple so far as their underlying planning positions concern. Because it is
Sorry, can I just catch up? Um, section seventeen of the nineteen sixty act
Yes.
deemed planning permissions.
That's right.
So as I recollect hazily, um, there was an obligation to apply for planning permission.
Yes.
But if the local authority didn't deal with the matter within a certain time limit,
Yes.
you had a deemed planning permission. Is that what you're referring to?
That is exactly.
And it was unconditional?
Yes.
And this is the, one of the examples of existing planning rights referred to by Lord Reed in Hartl.
Yes.
Right.
It is, exactly. That is the page that we're on, uh, the process of bringing forward, uh, existing rights and the use of land and bringing them forward into what's the new planning system. Seizing lots of context, seizing minerals with interim development order permissions, that sort of approach. So even where the planning authorities
So these were all, these first few cases are all section seventeen permissions.
They are.
They're all deemed unrestricted.
They are. Crippendham does have conditions.
Yes.
And so that's an example of
Express grant.
An express grant, um, but coming about via the same process where the authority engaged.
You've made a decision in that case.
Yes, and said you can have thirteen. Um, but when one appreciates the nature of those cases, you can also see why But when one appreciates the nature of those cases, you can also see why both, uh, landowners and also, um, those the, the courts that were dealing with this new, uh, procedure were concerned to ensure that in the interaction between the planning regime and the licensing regime, there wasn't a process whereby the value in the land was being trimmed back by a process which didn't have a compensatory provision. And we see that. So so far as ESDL is concerned, I'll deal with that first of all, um. The first point is to deal head on with what Lord Denning had to say, and I'll pick up on the way in which my lord discussed the matter with Mr, my lord, Lord Justice Holgate, discussed the matter with my lady friend, as to the way in which Lord Denning, if I can put it this way, had a bright idea as to how to go about dealing with this interaction to 167. 166, 167 is where Lord, Lord Denning's judgment is to be found, and the outline detail point is over the page at the top of 169. Which is the point which, uh, found favour in the inner house in the Partridge case. So at the top of 169, this leads Lord Denning inexorably to the conclusion that the planning authority ought to direct their attention to matters in outline, leaving the site authority to deal with all matters of detail. Put it then in two questions, to really caravan site at all, if yes, don't go into any detail. Like Mr Harwood, I'm not aware of that being followed. Certainly in respect of the grant of planning permission.
Well, in the way the other cases have developed, it would be puzzling. Because the other cases have made clear that when you're looking at site conditions, you can't have regard to pure planning matters, so your court.
Yes, it's irreconcilable.
And this was quite early on in the, uh, sort of evolution of the understanding of the relationship between the two.
Very much so. And indeed, it was a roundabout at the time at which the statutory concept of outline permission was invented.
Was that the 62 Act?
Yes. So it hadn't been around.
The 62 Act was consolidating the town and country planning act, but I think
But we didn't have outline
We didn't have outline planning permissions before 1962.
I don't think we did.
He was ahead of his time.
Yes. Um, maybe it was being spoken about, um. Certainly, it was used colloquially, but the, the whole concept, um, was at around this time. So it hadn't really settled. And I can confirm the precise section where it first came in, in due course, it's not immediate, it's out of mind. So I need to say, uh, no more about that particular part of the judgment. So far as the, the ratio is concerned of Lord Denning's judgment, if we turn the page to page 170.
Just before you leave, I'm so sorry, page 169, we looked at the top, it's at the bottom of the page that he criticises what happened in Crittenham on the part of the local authority, because they imposed a condition on planning permission, limiting the number, and on his thesis, that shouldn't have happened. But then the in-house says, well, we don't agree with that.
Exactly, exactly. Um, sorry, no, not at all. And so at the page 170, at paragraph at B, we, we get a holding at the end of that paragraph, at D. Then the master of the role says, I hold that that it is within the power of a site authority, as distinct from a planning authority, to impose conditions limiting the number of caravans, even in an existing rights case, without payment of compensation. So there he, being in my submission, very clear as to what he is holding as the law in, in that regard. And in my submission, when one comes to look at the directions in which changes may be made, um, by the, the, the system of licensing, one cannot by licensing expand a planning permission. But there may be circumstances, licensing circumstances, which make it appropriate to grant a licence, which is for less than a planning permission. But they would of course have to be matters which relate to site licensing.
Or perhaps site licensing plus overlapping this planning, I mean, if it's a consideration which falls within both regimes.
My lord, yes. There, there is discussion in these cases of, of concentric and separate circles. And, um, if we get to the point of Venn diagrams in this case, my submission would be that it, that they're not separate and they're not concentric, they're overlapping, that there are matters of, of site licensing which might bear upon the site, which might cut it down, which aren't planning matters, so overlapping. And overlapping is a term which one finds frequently in these cases. Lastly, in respect of the master of the role's judgment, that it, at page 171, E through to G, that treats the considerations which the justices considered when they were hearing the appeal, and finds all of them to be properly within scope of site licensing, except for the green belt. So far as those which are off-site impacts are concerned, my submission is that whether that particular type of off-site impact is a planning matter, or only a site matter, or both, is going to be context and case specific. It's something to be firstly assessed on a case-specific basis. And secondly, the weight to be given to it is going to be case-specific. And of course, it will always be important that the weight given to it is the appropriate weight having regard to site licensing, not anything else. But I, I would submit that all of those which are listed in the paragraph E to F are perfectly properly the site licensing consideration in an appropriate case. I've tried to think of a circumstance where you could get green belt policy in site licensing, I've been unable to do so. And one sees that it's easily distinguished from the other matters, because it is, um, the only one which is a statement of a, of a planning policy. It is a, a pure matter of planning policy, as opposed to the other matters being matters which are concerned with the character of the use of land, classic planning considerations. So again, we come back there to, to the planning position, we come back to the planning position. But I don't propose to say anything about the other two judgments, save in respect what's said by Lord Justice Harman at 175, just to highlight it, F, 175F. Which Harman cannot have intended to produce a conflict between the powers and rights of the authority in the site licensing. So I respectfully adopt that and rely upon it as a strong indication of the way in which these powers are expected to work together and against each other, to use the phrase used earlier, in harmony. Yeah, comparing the, the facts in ESDL to our case, but it's, it's relatively straightforward, it's, it's simply about numbers. If I could then pick up on Crittenham.
And in summary, what happened in ESDL was that there was a deemed planning permission, and then it was numbers. And they used the green belt policy to try and introduce a limit on numbers.
Yes, and hence it went back. Whereas in Crittenham, we have a condition limiting to 13.
In the planning permission.
In the planning permission. So it's, it's helpful to go to the headnote. Headnote at page 145 of the Greens Bench report. So from 1939, we're using a site for not more than 13 caravans. The 1960 Act came into force, but within two months, the point. And top page 146, the local planning authority granted commission. So it's an express grant case, subject to a condition not to exceed 13. And so again, it's a numbers case with slightly different bases. And this is very much a case which is founded, again, in the all-important section 33 of the 1960 Act, as we see from the headnote, where it says, held, uh, Lord Partridge Justice and Mr Justice win. Six lines, section 33 of the Act of 1960, on its true construction, provided that a site licence could be issued if there's a planning permission. The permission in that context being defined, as my lord has indicated by section 29, or as including the conditions. So when we get to Crittenham, we've got, by reason of the statute, and by reason of, um, what is extremely well-established law, that you interpret the permission, including the conditions. So the, the planning position here, that is informed in particular by, by the condition. As I will submit, it is in our case. And it goes on to say that, having referred to 294, including any condition attached to it, and that therefore the grant of a site licence under sections 33 must be confined to the limits of a planning permission, including any conditions attached to it. Since the condition limiting the number of caravans on the site to 13 was attached to a planning permission, the justices will write and hold in the evidence association. And so that's a manifestation of the planning regime in the primary regime here. It's that which describes the use of land, the operational development which can be undertaken on it, and provides the definition to what is permitted. And in, in this regard, I just want to go to page 154, if the court would allow me to do so, page 154 in the report. Where the, the point is captured extremely crisply in the second paragraph. So pure point of law, whether a local planning, whether a local authority issuing a site licence, imposing conditions, is bound to act within the terms of the planning permission, the answer is yes. So
I also note the next paragraph, it's well-recognised that 47 Planning Act didn't give sufficient control of the use of lands.
My lord, yes, in particular, the, the last full sentence, to have two controls covering any respect. Would seem quite unreal. So the court, the court's looking at the reality and the purpose, and coming to, uh, construction which gives sense and reality to, to the two schemes. Having dealt with, um, Crittenham, I want to turn to Babbage, which is a little later in time. In fact, you know, the authorities' bundle, Babbage is to be found behind tab number five. So this is a case which goes the other way. Where there is, again, by where the factual background, it is a situation where there is a relatively simple permission. And what the site licensing process does by way of condition is produce an outcome which could have been achieved by a planning permission, a condition, uh, for seasonal use or presence. Without any justification either explained, nor that one can really imagine. As to why taking the caravans off over winter would be justified. And if you could turn please to page 74.
Well, 69, just note that this was a paragraph, this was, this was a section 17 deemed planning permission.
My lord, yes.
So it was unconditional. Does that follow?
Yes, it is, it is one of the unconditional section 17 deemed consents. Sorry. And in, in comes from the licensing regime, quite a, quite an onerous condition. And it's for, and that reason that page 255. Mr Justice Fox says
And this is actually a condition requiring the caravans to be removed?
Off-site.
Off-site.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And that the, from the point of view of understanding the relationship between these two regimes, I submit that the bottom half of page 255 is particularly helpful. Because in our overlapping circles approach, this is an acknowledgement that the distinction between planning and site considerations may often be difficult to identify with clarity. Which is consistent with some overlapping and not being a bright line distinction. Judge goes on to say, but this one's clearly wrong. Towards the end of that paragraph, in the last three lines, um, he explains that, so it seems to him that the, uh, the condition is solely a planning consideration, it's preventing use of the site for the sighting of caravan, solely for the benefit of visual amenities of other land, which is a useful point at which to pick up the question of, of visual amenity. Because of course, as the court has seen, one of the matters in section five of the 1960 Act is amenity, and it plainly Because of course, as the court has seen, one of the matters in section five of the nineteen sixty act is amenity, and it plainly includes visual amenity. Plainly includes visual amenity within the site, it talks about planting, landscaping, etcetera. Back to planning position. In our case, there is a condition on the planning permission which is expressly about, we know that from the reasons, which is expressly about preserving the visual amenity of the site. So the reason given for having a particular disposition of caravans is by reason of the visual amenities of this site and expressly referring to the River Derwent and its scenic beauty.
So this is the condition.
On sixty six permission.
On the sixty six permission, so that's condition what are you talking about for?
My lord, yes.
Yeah.
And its reason.
Yes, and is this the text which is a little difficult to read?
It is. I think that if given a moment, I can find this sort of transcribed within the decision letter. So if my lord could go to the nineteen sixty six planning permission, which is to be found.
Yes.
Page five four under. Thank you.
I mean, just for my note, I mean, you're referring to page six of your reasons.
Yes.
This is a site of great scenic importance, etcetera.
That's precisely, precisely right. And those are the reasons given for the imposition of.
Well, the next bit, this part of the valley is the gateway for any traveller, any travellers by road and rail to the national park, etcetera, etcetera.
Yes, so it's abundantly clear that the planning authority was.
How's that visual amenity of the site internal to the site?
It's visual amenity both ways, both from looking out and also looking in. So the visual amenity of the site is relevant in both directions, so it is an off-site point, an off-site immunity point. And it engages with the interests of the public. So the public are expressly referred to in section five of the nineteen sixty act. So
This is a planning permission, it's not a planning permission, it's not a section five.
So what I'm trying to do is to look at the topic of amenity, in particular visual amenity, having seen that come up in having a look at Babbage. And just to test the limits of an appropriate condition so far as a site licence is concerned, because we have the reference within section five to amenity. And also the inclusion, as I can call it, as receptor of the public. How far does that go? And my submission is that it's going to be dependent upon the underlying planning permission. In our case, the underlying planning permission does include an element of definition which is based upon a question of amenity. And so the document itself explains in its reasons that it has set out the layout pursuant to in particular condition two, by reason of the scenic beauty of both the site and the land around the site. So per Babbage, in a particular planning position, it may be completely irrelevant to site licensing considerations. But a planning position may be such that it is potentially relevant to the conditions which go on a site licence.
Is this relying on a conformity principle?
Yes. Because the conformity and consistency, in the event that conditions had the effect of disturbing what the conditions were evidently seeking to achieve, that would create a conflict between the two, and the site licence shouldn't do that. But it's very much dependent on what the planning position is in respect of any particular case. In a section seventeen case, the planning permission isn't going to justify that. In our case, there is a nexus, there is a foothold in that regard. So that's why I come back again to the planning position in any particular case. But one can see rather similar points playing out, not exactly the same, but rather similar in the Scottish case. Which is the fourth case. Which I handed out this morning. And I respectfully agree with the alterations during arguments this morning as to the particular importance of paragraphs twenty one and twenty two. So therein his conclusions. Lord Hill, the Justice Club differed from Edsall for the reasons which you've already identified. But in particular, this was on the basis of an interpretation of the planning permission in this case. And at the bottom of five nine four, in the sentence, with the same point in it, it is being said that it is a necessary prerequisite. So the necessary prerequisite here was a planning permission which had to be interpreted. Certainly for my part, I learned what docketing was. Here, there was docketed to this permission, a plan which the court interpreted to be descriptive of both number and disposition of a particular caravan. So that being the case, that the planning position was interpreted by the court and the planning permission being underscored is the basis on which the decision was made as to whether or not a site licensing decision was appropriate within the powers under the nineteen sixty act or whether it was outside of them. Again, it was dependent upon the planning position in the particular case. To be clear, I would respectfully adopt and agree with what's said at paragraph twenty one, so far as that is said. I would also note that this is another case which says at twenty two that these planning points and licensing considerations may overlap. The constant theme of the cases. So returning to planning position in respect of this case.
Let's ask one question of principle. Your submission is that planning permission is at least a material consideration, including the interpretation of any relevant permission. Do you say that the law goes so far as to require the site licensing authority to follow the planning permission as opposed to take it into account before they decide whether to depart from it? For example, exercising section five powers?
And I go so far as to say that it would be unlawful to extend or go further than that the planning permission admits. The question is, the principle of following, yes, but I would submit that that is going to be something of an evaluative judgment.
Well, the consideration I have in mind is where the site licensing authority is contemplating a different arrangement, disposition within the site. And but if they're going to do that, you would think it would be ridiculous if they didn't take into account the planning considerations which led to the previous decision which they're thinking of moving away from. They're thinking of moving one or two pitches or a number of pitches.
My first response to that would be as to the potential significant administrative difficulty that that would bring on that example. Because if the holder of the planning permission wants to change the disposition, they would make a section seventy three application. And that would go on to the public record. And so that's important that one knows what the permission is. If there is a shortcut via the licensing regime, that cuts against.
Well, the simple point is that if you get a different arrangement approved on the site licence, you still need the relevant planning permission.
Yes.
Is there two regimes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
While they speak to each other, the site licensing regime cannot tell the planning regime what to do. Save so far as the planning regime has given permitted development rights. But in our case, the particular circumstance, the particular planning position which is not covered in any of the decisions, thankfully, is the presence of an enforcement notice. And in my submission, the upper tribunal was correct to identify it as irrational for the first tier tribunal to take the approach it did, on both of the approaches to rationality. Whether one takes that as process-related material consideration or whether one takes it as a perverse outcome. Could reasonably direct themselves, the first tier tribunal had arrived at that conclusion if they had properly understood both the facts and the effects of what they were doing. So it was irrational. And it is consistent with what the upper tribunal had said a couple of years earlier about the importance of getting the planning position clear, first of all. But the significant unusual feature of this case is that that the planning position has been fixed in a way which cannot be questioned in any legal proceedings because of section two eight five of the nineteen ninety act. So far as the operational enforcement notice is concerned. And what was irrational for the first tier tribunal was to say in terms, well, we realise that there's a tension here, but that's not for us. But that was missing out the material consideration, and that's what led to an irrational outcome which had the impact of turning the enforcement notice, the appeal decision and the section two eight nine judgment into so much waste paper. That was the impact of it. And that is such a surprising result that it can properly be described as irrational. The case has this further additional feature which isn't in any of the cases we've looked at, which is as to the permitted development rights. That is really the core of my learned friend's argument. The simple point is a site licence must be granted. With it comes a very broadly framed permitted development. But firstly, that permitted development right can only ever relate to that for which there is planning permission, because it is only on the basis of that planning permission that the site licence may come forward. And secondly, as my learned friend expressly properly acknowledges in his skeleton argument, permitted development rights are for the future. They only come into effect when a site licence is in place. And so
Can I just make sure I understand that the PD right is created by the statutory instrument?
Yes.
But you're talking about reliance on, are you on the PD right? When on a particular piece of land, the circumstances arise to engage that right, is that the way you?
That is the way I'm putting it. And what my learned friend has never had is a permitted development right in place for the development which has been undertaken on this site. Because there isn't a licence in respect of that. And the argument is just attempting to turn this system into reverse. It's trying to make the system work backwards and it just doesn't work. So however broad the PD right might be, it doesn't come into play unless and until there is a site licence for a disposition of caravans which fits what has been built. And so ultimately, it doesn't take us anywhere. Now, I want to make sure that I leave my learned friend.
Are you going to deal with section one hundred and eighty?
Opportunity to reply.
I would be grateful for a little help on that, is it tab two?
Yes.
Of the tab, um.
Yeah.
And following on from the submission you just made. Page twenty six of the the enforcement notice seeks to have effect so far as it's inconsistent with a permission, being a permission granted for any development carried out before the grant of that permission. I mean, those words are reminiscent of section seventy three A, being a permission to retain development previously carried out. And this is perhaps not the decision in this case, but I don't know if you can help on this, but if a PD right is prospective, is it meant to authorise, does it authorise something that's already happened?
Yes.
I mean, there is something in the planning encyclopedia touching on this, the decision of Mr. Justice Mann. But he says, my understanding is, a PD right can't do this, he doesn't give any source, it's not a proper law of law or anything. Have you come across this as well?
No, I haven't. No, the extent to which I can help on that is if one thinks about it in the enforcement context. It's concerned with on enforcement or a breach of condition notice. So where there's either an enforcement notice, as in this case, or a breach of condition notice.
I mean, the other angle going through my mind is how this intersects with the criminal sanctions. Because if you get a planning permission which impacts upon an enforcement notice in this way, my recollection is it doesn't affect the period of time prior to that grant of permission. You're still criminally liable in relation to that period, aren't you?
Until you've got the permission.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
So I'm just trying to see how this analysis fits with a PD right.
The
Anyway.
The purpose for which I have used this in practice is to understand how an enforcement notice dies, it can cease to have effect by obtaining, or to the extent how an enforcement notice dies, it can cease to have effect by obtaining, or to the extent to which you obtain permission. But I I've not, I've never come across it in respect of a PD right in practice.
There's probably no authority on it, proper authority.
And if I find any, I will of course report it.
Thank you.
So it's just one discrete point which I wanted to make about the sixty-six permission, which I didn't pick up, and this will be my last point. So if we could go please in the supplementary bundle to the sixty-six permission, which is at page two, three. Sorry, page four. I just wanted to pick up on the description of development in the context of the questions which came up this morning about what this permission was for and what sort of caravans were covered by it. And noting the distinction between the impact of the description of development as opposed to the impact of the condition. The description of development on page four is for the extension of an existing caravan site from thirty to sixty caravans. The seasonal towing use, so the description development there seems to indicate a mixture of uses, including seasonal and towing use. And to be understood in the context of what's at the top of page five in bold and underlined, after the conditions, which was in respect of an application for extension, thirty to sixty, it's agreed that the majority should come out, the seasonal and towing use. So the description of development doesn't seem to indicate the entirety of the sixty being for static or permanent residential. That was the only observation I had in respect of that particular and discrete issue, whether anything turns on it or not.
The inspector decided that the the effect of this was was to have all the sixty being the more large twin unit. The searchism could be used for permanent residents and searchism could be used not. Is that right?
It's not quite what the certificate says, because its certificate has something which isn't. It says proposed sighting thirty static caravans for permanent residential occupation thirty, twelve month hold of occupation, so it's broadly what the way my lawyer puts it, yes. So that's what the certificate says, and that's the finish. I'm going to mess like this.
No, thank you very much indeed. Yes, Tahar.
Well, also just to deal with a few points arising from the other person. What everyone has rightly recognised is that the ability to impose conditions is governed by, on the site licences, is governed by section five in terms of what scope is of what's being considered. And if there is a planning, planning constraint arises from the planning permission which is being relied upon, there is no constraint which arises from the view of the planning merits which are contained in the enforcement notice or the enforcement notice decision. Because the two ways into what conditions may be imposed is either by section three, subsection three, go by, well, what is the planning permission, what's the the basis for the site licence being issued? And the question that then arises of conflict between those. Or it is to look at section five. And what are the considerations? So the purposes at the start of section five, subsection one, the interest of people on the site, the meaning to the of neighbours, the public at large, and the specific powers which are contained within section five one. The extent of that consideration, the section five consideration, has been dealt with by this court, most particularly in Esdale and Babbage. And I agree with my learned friend's analogy of the Venn diagram between the planning considerations and the site licence considerations, that there is an overlap. And there will be some things which are planning considerations but not site licence considerations, and some things which will be site licence considerations and not planning considerations. It's not, as I think one of the nineteen sixties cases refers to concentric circles, it it is that degree of overlap. And it's right, of course, to recognise that the error of overlap is significant, so that's the decision of this court in Esdale. However, the parts which are not of our planning and are not the site's licence are themselves significant. And it's not simply a matter of a planning policy, as in Greenbelt, but as this court identified in Babbage, the questions of visual amenity for people off-site. And my learned friend helped me draw the court's attention to the reasoning in the nineteen sixty-six planning permission for the conditions related to citing that there was, even though the pre World Heritage Site context, a concern about the visibility of the development from the valley, from the Derwent, River Derwent, and from the Asics. So the views up through there. Those were planning considerations identified and sought to be addressed in the planning permission. What cannot be done is to use the site licence process to seek to address those pure planning considerations. Again, to pick up however desirable on changes in circumstances, or to cover what in some circumstances, not necessarily this one, but some circumstances, could have been seen as being a planning permission which was inadequate. Or deal with a situation where parts of a planning permission were no longer in effect by time whatever, and that's
Sorry, were no longer?
No, no longer in effect because a breach is over time, we don't establish, but the approach which is taken here by the upper tribunal is one of requiring effect to be given to pure planning considerations. And what my learned friend described as the planning position, which is not the same as the planning admission. What the upper tribunal sought to do was to give effect to the view of the planning merits which have been taken in the enforcement notice appeal. It was not saying, well, actually, the site licence needs to comply with the nineteen sixty-six planning permission or taking any points on that, and neither were the local authority. It was applying that legitimately pure planning position. That's a position which was not framed as being put within the section five consideration. The section five considerations were very much in the mind of the first tier tribunal. They, the way they distinguished between the tree protection, which was something they applied in section five, and the enforcement notice itself, the first tier tribunal referring to Babbage, and having that distinction very much in mind. But that's not what the upper tribunal did. They applied on a pure basis and applied it not simply in terms of looking at those considerations in broad terms and and saying how it's proposed, but seeking it as an absolute that the site licence could not rationally be used to do something that's inconsistent with that. As we've looked at, the planning regime allows decisions to be taken in the future which are inconsistent, different views on planning merits to those taken in an enforcement notice. And to pick up the point which which my learned friend was asked about by Lord Justice Holgate in terms of section one hundred and eighty. Section one hundred and eighty of the Town and Country Planning Act is dealing with a situation where planning, retrospective planning permission is granted for works which are the subject of the, of an enforcement notice. So the local authority can go or and inspect on a later appeal and not in the enforcement notice process, go back on the enforcement notice decision. Section one hundred and eighty-one deals with future development where either somebody without planning permission tries to repeat what's already been subject to the notice and they can't.
Is that dealing with a situation where you comply with the notice, take the development away? And then the, doesn't the statute, doesn't the notice continue to apply to subsequent repetition of that?
So the, if 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 the week later you put the caravan back, one hundred and eighty-one maintains that.
One hundred and eighty-one maintains the enforcement.
maintains the enforcement notice.
By compliance with it.
Yeah. But what that does have is the express provision in section one hundred and eighty-one, two. So for example, in terms of discontinuance of the use of that one hundred and eighty-one, two, to the extent that it is in contravention of part three, but part three is a part of the act, of course, which grants planning permission. So what one hundred and eighty-one, two does is to say, well, if the subsequently planning permission for that use, then the enforcement notice doesn't have effect in relation to a a resumption of that. And again, I think this is, has been common ground throughout the various proceedings. The a a permitted development rights arising in the future, as even in respect to the licence we do have, we have three within the enforcement notice area, three sites, plots within the enforcement notice area. And those have permitted development rights for the operational development which is required by the conditions, including hard standings. And the enforcement notice doesn't take away that right. Now, that right is
This is dealing with with use as opposed to operation development, and and it's without prejudice to subsection one. Which provision are you actually relying upon?
Well, my lord, please, it has to follow from the regime as a whole, because it's it's an enforcement, the enforcement notice, of course, is is against an authorised use. Looking at the legislation, it is possible for planning permission to be granted for development, which is even existing development which is contrary to enforcement, that's what's one hundred and eighty, section one hundred and eighty is about. Section one hundred and eighty-one, two, has that particular provision in respect of use of land. But to looking at the process, looking at the the legislation in context, it's not explicitly dealt with. The legislation could not mean that where you have planning permission, where where the enforcement requires the removal of a building, where section one hundred and eighty says, well, if you subsequently get planning permission to retain that particular building, refer to the enforcement notice, the enforcement sees it to have effect, have a situation where that building having been removed pursuant to the enforcement notice, it is then not possible to grant planning permission for a new building, which otherwise falls in the terms of the enforcement stage, is also subject to the enforcement notice. So my lord, whilst that point in terms of operational developments assisting from use isn't expressly dealt in the context of the legislation's whole, that that must be the outcome, and that doesn't seem to have been in dispute in the in the proceedings. The permitted development rights, we put it, and my learned friend, I can't think of it. Okay, so directly, our concerned perspective, the point about anything that remains on the site is that while it's, and it's perfected in the upper tribunal, it's a natural to dig something up if somebody's going to immediately put it down, back down the following week, and you have all the cost of disruption and the environmental effects which do that.
So which provision are you relying on?
In in terms of the permitted development rights allowing future development, which is inconsistent with the existing enforcement notice, the operational development, my lord, what I say is that looking at the legislation in context is not dealt expressly in the legislation, very clearly it's not dealt expressly in the legislation. The only sensible construction is that the planning permission can be granted, whether that is on application or permitted development rights in the future, which would then not, if it's carried out in the future, be a breach of the enforcement notice. Suggests that no other construction of the legislation would be sensible, because otherwise that leaves, in the sense of the land sort of sterilised to the degree of what the the conflict is with the enforcement notice, that's inconsistent with how particular other scenarios are dealt with in section one hundred and eighteen, one hundred and eighty-one.
What about subsection three? If any development is carried out in that, then it would be in the state of building for the works which have been removed or altered in compliance. The notice shall not stand that its terms are not out for the purpose of being deemed to apply in relation to the building. Because that's that's a that's a continuing effect.
It's it's it's, let us say, a continuing effect, but it would not be a sensible construction, how the situation. a sensible construction, how the situation, it covers, of course, somebody putting the building back. If that new building has planning permission, it would be, it's an absurd position that the exist, the earlier the enforcement notices could still be used to enable the local authority using section one hundred and seventy eight, which is the power to take direct action, go on the site and tear it down. That would be a an outcome which would be, would be a detritus of excise discretion, irrational in the narrow, nobody could do it sense. And so one which is not lawful for the legislation must in that situation be taken to allow the notice of continuing effect where the replacement does not have planning permission. My lord, so that's what I was going to say on the section eight, one hundred and eighty, one point. But to turn back briefly to the planning position. If there is a planning position, it is the nineteen sixty six act. It's not the view on the merits in the enforcement notice. And that is the error which the upper tribunal made in finding that the first tier tribunal's very careful consideration of the case law and the merits was irrational in those terms. What is being sought to be done by the upper tribunal is to apply not actually the limits of a planning permission or a legally binding position. But is a view taken on the planning merits, which the regime would allow in planning terms to be overtaken, and which the authority, if it wished to take a different view on the planning merits from what would be permitted development, has the power to intervene. What is at the heart of the planning merits issues are matters which are pure planning considerations, the impact on heritage assets, particularly the world heritage site. Those are matters which fall within the pure considerations. The first tier tribunal were quite right to say that those were not blockers on what the appropriate site licence should be. The upper tribunal was wrong to say that the first tier tribunal approach was irrational. What the first tier tribunal have done is to produce a position which perhaps for both parties ought to be seen as a compromise. But a position which allows this very long established caravan site with sixty caravans on site for decades to move forward and to provide accommodation rather than as being in a position of having a sixty unit caravan site turned into six units. My lords, unless I can help you further, those are all my submissions.
Yep, thank you very much indeed. Thank you both, or thank you all rather, for your respective submissions. We will be reserving our judgments, which will be provided to in draft for the usual limited purposes, which you will explain to your clients if necessary. And once you've received the judgments, we would assume you'll be able to agree a draft order. But if there are any issues that require determination, we will deal with those on paper. So thank you again.